Beginning to go.
Father God, we pause and we thank you for our country we live in and freedoms we enjoy, the things we take for granted too often, and we're mindful those that protect it. Those who wear bad as uniform, we pray to watch over them and keep them safe. We're thankful for our constituents we can do business with, and we pray for wisdom as we make those decisions and help us and encourage us along the way. Thank thee for all things, and we ask of praise.
What allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Good morning. All right, first order of business are the minutes. Do we have any moves, adds, or changes on this?
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second, no one favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero. We had payroll totaling $258,823.72, and claims totaling $973,444.67. Any changes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Oh, make the motion to accept the financials as presented.
Second, and all favor, aye?
Aye.
And Chair.
Morning.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
There are paper here. As of this morning, we have 84 inmates in jail. Thirty of those are pretrial Superior, 17 are pretrial Circuit, 19 F6, and eight DOC. Again, kind of an update on construction. We have multiple crews out there working. We do have a updated construction meeting tomorrow. We had one last week. The roofers are working on the roof right now. They're looking at the end of July they're going to be done. So that crew works 10 days straight and then gets two days off pending weather. So they've been working on the roof now for about a week and a half. Replacement, we got a lot of materials sitting in our parking lot out there. So about half the office is done with the HVAC systems. They're buttoning up the one in the lobby, which has had our lobby kind of closed down. We're still servicing people. We have our foyer open and we put a phone out there, but just due to safety concerns and everything else. But they're putting the ceiling grids back in today, so hopefully this week we'll have our lobby opened back up. And yeah, and then the masonry work is, they're getting ready to do the interior masonry work on the addition part, so that should be going. Again, I opened an invitation, anybody wants to come out and see it. I know one of the council members came out last week and did a walkthrough with me and...
I did a walkthrough without you.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So yeah, it's starting to take place. They got the door frames all in in the addition part, so you can kind of get a feel for what that's going to look like when that comes through. But so next on the agenda, I have Mr. Sloan, Superintendent with Southern Wells. He can come up here with me. This is the year we'll be doing one for Norwell pretty soon, too. I apologize, I don't have a copy for you. The copy machine's out of paper. But we're up for renewal with our contract for SROs with both Norwell and Southern Wells. Chad Bradley is our SRO for Southern Wells, and Kurt Hunt is our SRO at Northern Wells. But Mr. Sloan is the Superintendent with Southern Wells. We've met several times and kind of went over the current contract with them, and we go through any updated increases in the cost of what's associated with a deputy when it comes to the school. The agreement that has always been is that they pay 70% of the cost of our deputy. So with the two years being passed, obviously wages have changed and those type of things. So we kind of went through, and then just on their school and Mr. Sloan's spin on what they want to do with the school, we've met several times as far as trying to define the responsibilities of the SRO in their school. And so we feel like we have an agreed upon contract to continue this relationship that is beneficial for not only the school but our community and build relationships with the kids within the schools, and also not to take our deputies off the road to deal with school stuff. We have somebody within the school that helps provide security and safety for not only the students but for the staff as well. So we want to continue that relationship. We're obviously going to present to council at the next council meeting, but just letting you guys know that we're getting a contract ready and prepared for the next two years to continue that relationship. So if you want to add anything you can do.
Echoing everything that Sheriff Holliday said, we value that relationship. We want it to continue and see a lot of benefit from that. I have this slated to go to my board pending their approval at tomorrow's board meeting as well, so that part will be done. And then things go forward as we respect, then I'm sure your June council meetings, I think, is that how it's approved?
Yep, yep. So for the financial side, so we're just letting you know as far as the contract and stuff, it's always something that we've had in place, and it's to be renewed every two years.
Technically, what is the effective date?
The effective date would be the new school year in the fall.
Got you.
So, yep, so our current contract runs through the end of this school season, and then it's in the contract to renegotiate for the next two years. There is an option in there to renew within one. If something's significantly changed, we could change it mid-contract. But they're very similar between the schools. What we really defined was a job description for the SRO in Southern Wells, which is outside of the contract. There wasn't a whole lot of tweaks in that other than dates and dollar amounts for what they reimburse the county back for, so.
Fantastic.
The commissioners typically don't review that, right? That's just done through you guys?
Yep, yeah, it's typically, we're kind of just letting you guys know. Yep, just letting you know how we're continuing that. I mean, the agreement when we did SROs in both schools was to not take from our current staff. Those were additional deputies that were added to the agency, and then we, those SROs come back to the road during the summer and then enter back into the school system. So about 70% of their time is in the school, and that's why they pay for that and that breakdown of percentage, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have, sorry.
No, that's right. Perfect, thank you. Highway.
Good morning.
Good show.
We got most of our pipe repairs done. We've been back on orders for quite some time, and we're almost caught up with that. We, with all the weeds and grass growing so fast, we started mowing ditch lines today. We'll continue to do that until we make one round around the county, and then we'll take a break unless the water keeps coming, they keep growing, and we'll hit it again. We continue to have two patch crews and a leveling crew out prepping the roads for chip seal when we can get started. We're hoping to start that early June. And I just want to remind everybody, if they come upon any of our equipment or crews, please slow down and give us space so we can make your roads better. And with that, we got an update from Connor for the Highway Garage.
Yep. We are, moved our last progress meeting from last week to this week because we basically didn't have anything to review. The ball is essentially in the court of the design team right now, and they are working on finalizing a 90 or 95% set of documents. So we expect to see a lot more detail and hopefully a spec book sometime today or tomorrow. I may move the progress meeting one more week to give everyone time to review those documents ahead of having a meeting. We might not push it a full week. We might try to do like Thursday or Friday this week rather than Tuesday.
I did have one question. I just thought about it over the weekend. Yeah. A segment dedicated to pipes, culvers. Do we have a location where that's going to go, or just south of the tile ditch?
South of the tile ditch.
Okay, okay. I just thought it should be on the plane someplace. It takes up space, but feasibility, accessibility, that's the thing important, so.
One bit of good news that we did have is that we finally got the cold storage fire protection sorted out. Sounds like we'll be able to keep a four-sided building and not have to sprinkle it for the code. Exactly. We just have to be careful about what we store in.
Exactly.
So that's a part of our hands.
Part of that, I was going to store some pipes in, too. With us having the extra room, that way they're out of the sunlight and they don't...
Needed and necessary, satisfied.
Yeah.
Good. All right. So let me know on date so I can adjust my calendar.
I will.
I have tomorrow, but...
Well, I was going to say I had it on Friday, the documents, and so I wasn't going to move the date, and we didn't have them, so tomorrow's their new deadline that they've set and turn on.
I did skip over the dust application, too. We got our first dust application put down on the 11th or finished on the 11th, and then within the next two weeks, we'll have the second application going on. So the first round is complete.
Basically, before Memorial Day, they have like...
Yes. We don't have an exact date, whether depending, but they, we let it sit for a week or two, and then we go and make the second round. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nate?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple additions to this. First thing, I want to kind of re-cover our call for road conversion petitions. As we've had in the past few years, we do this on an annual basis, assemble all of the conversion petition forms that people on gravel roads asking to turn those gravel roads into chip seal. So, and June 1st is the annual deadline. Between June and July, we usually assemble that information, then I'd make a presentation in July. We'll see if I'm able to make that presentation in July as our bookkeeper is out on medical leave right now, so that may have to slip a little bit, but I'd like to make that kind of plea for the public so that they understand that we need to have that information in by June 1st. That, the form is available at the Highway Garage and is also available online under the forms tab on wallscounty.org. So certainly I want to see as many of those as can come in. I think a lot of people assume that someone is taking care of it, but if you live on that road and you've never signed a petition, then it's certainly going to be stalled out. We want to know that the public wants to have their road converted. We want to see people express their interest to have that done, and that's really helpful for the department and for you as the commissioners to make good decisions on where we want to spend and allocate money in the future. So just want to bring that up.
What's the minimum right of way that we need...
We ask for, we ask for 30-foot half right of ways from these, and part of that is because of the local road safety plan. We're looking for clear zone areas. There's some areas where maybe that's, we wouldn't actually do work in that area, but it is to set utilities back, maybe pull trees out that would be in the clear zone for runoff road accidents. We want to make sure that we've got room to provide the drainage necessary, and rather than try to look at min-maxing every right of way, we are certainly looking to try to... If I'm going to ask you for 30 feet of right of way, I want to ask your neighbor for that same amount, so.
So you've made a standard.
Yeah, we just set that as a standard of 30 feet. That way, we're not equivocating. If there were a circumstance where we have to ask for additional right of way beyond that 30, we would make accommodations for those circumstances. But that would be fairly unique based on topography, so, and that, we haven't had a circumstance where that's been necessary at this point. Often, a right of entry for temporary work would be more than adequate for us to make that happen, so. But these are, those aren't full state road right of ways. Those are pretty typical 55 mile an hour speed limit roads, and we're trying to make those safer, so. Yep, absolutely. Murray Stormwater Project work is progressing on that, working with VTF on the pavement plan. It sounds like we're in good shape as far as the cost estimate for doing a full-depth asphalt across the entire roadway. So take the road out that's there, do aggregate, subgrade, intermediate, and surface, so that should be a nice asphalt pavement section in the future. Once there, our storm work is done, it'll be a combination of the contingency funds between the regional sewer districts work and our stormwater project through SRF. So that's going to be kind of a piecemeal as far as the funding for that. So we'll need to work with the auditor's office to make sure everything looks right as far as our payment, but for the most part, SRF's, it's all reimbursement. So I just need to give you copies of that info, so. All right. Bridge 65, I do have a copy of a contract from Butler, Fairman, and Seifert for that project. Reviewed the scope, they have included the total in their project of a not-to-exceed of $110,410, or $110,410. It does include $6,400 of if-needed services, so that's not actually an increase from the last discussion on that, but it does have the supplemental services. There is a decrease, significant decrease in the survey cost on that, and recommending your approval on that agreement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
No one favor, aye?
Aye.
Next one is a County Home Road and County Road 300 South intersection, recommending our approval on an agreement with Engineering Resources, Inc. for the survey and design of County Home Road, including the intersection of 300 South. This, I would like to do the additional services on that to go north to 250 South. That addresses a couple of the high points in that roadway and the right of ways, so there'll be additional survey with that. The total agreement, or total fee for that project is established at $84,300 for that, and the target would be for commune crossings in calendar year 2024, possibly '25, depending on awards that would happen.
Will it be done as one project or split? The road portion and then the intersection or one...
There would be one complete project. So based on their early estimates, and again, with inflation, I have no idea where we're going to finally be. Hopefully, things start to calm down, but it does look like we're safely under $1 million in that project using commune crossings. So the right-of-way acquisition is going to be fairly small, the footprint as far as what we're going to try to finish with that is going to be fairly small, but it is going to be some right-of-way and quite a bit of survey to get that prepared.
Some of the road has got hips and big hill on the side of it.
Site distances are going to be a little bit difficult. The drainage thankfully is going to be fairly limited. We just need to get water from one side of the road to the other. There's natural drainage that's there. There's not a significant amount of off-site work that's going to have to be required, so.
I'll make that motion. And 250 Z Crossroad, correct?
Correct. That's the T Road in the north. That's the, just there, half mile north of where we're at.
Down the road that goes east. Yeah, I'll second that. No favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
Just an update. Bridge materials were delivered last week for Bridge 403. Crane's supposed to, was supposed to ride Friday, but I think it's on its way today. They should be driving pilings later on this afternoon or late morning, and then that's where I'm going to spend most of my days, watch them drive piles. So that'll be the plan on that project. Hopefully, once the pilings end, we'll be able to start assembling that timber bridge. That should go through fairly quickly. Next updates on the regional sewer district. I'm requesting your approval on the subrecipient agreement for the use of the ARPA funds committed to the district. This agreement is a requirement of the use of the funds and is necessary for the closing of the district for their Phase 2 project. I think Mark Burry had sent information over to you, and I did bring copies of that agreement. I just need to have signatures on that so they can move forward with their closing.
When is that planned or scheduled?
I don't have with me the exact date on that one, unfortunately. I know it's going to be here the end of this month, the first week of June.
And what was the dollar amount?
It would be, the ARPA is $2 million for that.
Is that what it was?
Yes.
So I think that's what we agreed early on.
And that's what's included in the, that was included in Baker, Tilly, and Barnes and Thornburgs rate study, rate ordinances, so all the paperwork that's been put together for that closing and published includes that, so.
You had the agreement?
Yes, I think that's one of the documents there.
I'll make that motion. Second, no one favor, aye?
Aye.
Other update for the regional sewer district, asphalt is started in Liberty Center. So that is actually underway finally.
Was it the bedding and fireworks?
Well, hopefully no fireworks. There may be people shooting guns in the air, but I'm sure everybody's excited to see that done. Hopefully, today, tomorrow, we start to, people will be real happy to have that all finalized. Utility permits, I have one utility permit for, I believe it's Heartland RMC, for pole replacement on 600 East, just south of, right there, on the east side, south of 224.
You have any others? That, just a little?
Well, that's just that utility permit. And then there's any right-of-way dedications.
You want them in separate motions?
Sure.
I'll make the motion then to the utility committee.
Second, no one favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero. And then whatever right of ways we have.
Right of ways.
Second, no one favor, aye?
Aye.
Other than that, any questions for me? Appreciate, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public transit. Hello.
There we go.
I first want to start with making a couple of introductions. You may have seen me in some of the LIPC meetings, but my name's Betsy Collier, the new trans, the old transportation program manager, the new executive director. So I have with me Sandra Bain, who is going to be our transportation program manager going forward, and then it's waving, Suzie Hallardine is our associate director, so some changes in the organization.
Nice to meet you.
All right. So Sandra, seeing as she's just pretty new, has asked that I just go ahead and do the presentation on the transportation section of our meeting here, so. Oops, sorry. Kind of sticking, there we go.
Thank you.
So the first graph that you see will be your annual comparison, and that is for January of '22 through April of '22. All the rest of the years are through the end of the year. So that just shows all of the trips that we've provided throughout the years that we've been public transit, starting in 2005. Through the end of April, we have so far provided 8,512 trips. As you can see, COVID kind of impacted 2020 and 2021, but we are on track to surpass 2021 if we stay the course like we're doing so far. The second comparison is the cumulative comparison, and that's every year from January through April. And so as you can see, 2022 did surpass for the first quarter, a little over the first quarter, 2021's numbers of 8,239 with our 8,512, so. And if I go too fast, please stop me and I can answer any questions. Your third graph will be your monthly trip comparison, and these are averaged. So for 2022, we are averaging 2,128 trips per month. Again, nowhere close to our highest of 2015, which was 3,642, but on the upward trend. Trips for Business Day are also averaged, so we are currently averaging 109 trips per Business Day, and we continue to add more clients and more trips every day of the week, so we should see that number continue to grow through the end of the year. The pie chart shows your riders in each age group. We track four different age groups with our software. Our largest age group is the adults, which is individuals 18 to 59 years of age, at 46% of our ridership, or 194 different adults so far through the end of April that we provided transportation for. The second largest category is seniors. That's anybody 60 and older, and they account for 40% of our ridership, and we have serviced 165 different seniors so far year to date. Our third is the students, K through 12, ages 6 through 18, 10% of our ridership and 40 different individual students. And then our infant category is newborns to five-years-old age, and they account for 4% currently of our ridership, and we've serviced 15 different infants. And then the last printout that you have is the annual data printout, and that gives you an idea of how many miles our vehicles are traveling and the gallons and the gas cost. So far through the end of April, our vehicles have traveled 46,934 miles. We've purchased 4,638 gallons of gas at a cost of $16,496, and as you can tell, we're going to be way above last year's total for gas prices, especially if they continue to rise as they have been. Any questions on that, from any of that? No? Okay. The next thing that I have then is the grant for NDOT for 2023. It's that time of year again, and we need to have numerous signatures, so I apologize. It's going to probably take a few minutes, but I have two copies, and then he's decided to leave.
How many vehicles does this include?
We have 14 vehicles.
14? Has that increased?
I'm sorry?
Has that increased here recently?
It has not. We actually were looking to replace some of our vehicles, and the vehicles for 2021 and the vehicles for 2022, those contracts were canceled due to unable to get parts and so forth. So we're still currently operating with an older fleet, and I'm not ready to expand that fleet right now until we get our numbers back up, so. All right, so we have a lot of different places, and I have two copies, so we'll just sign as we go.
I'll make the motion to allow the president to sign the agreement.
No favor, aye?
Aye.
Two zero.
Okay. This is the resolution. You need to do that, Lisa, correct?
Yes.
Resolution number?
Resolution number 202205.
Should just write that in.
Right ahead. Now it's for Lisa to sign, correct?
Yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm going to invade your space, sorry.
Nope.
All right, so this are the fundamentals of the both kinds of issues. Blake's been to...
Don't have to, you get to.
Do you want to do one stack and then another?
That's fine to me, yeah. That might be more efficient.
There is a place for Colin also. One alone, I also need to sign, and I figured I need to write in presence of the county commissioners, so.
Let's come.
Now, Colin, you've got two slices, you've got to sort that.
Thanks. Done with that. Also have some invoices that I need signatures, so I can turn this into NDOT in the real papers. If anything happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
And then I guess somebody can make a motion for the invoices to be signed off on, so I can turn this into that.
Make a motion for the invoices to be signed by the president.
Yes, we have the CARES, the ARC.
Second, one favor, Ray.
Aye.
Two zero.
Yes. I'll email them to you.
Okay. Oh, sure. Thanks.
Unless you want to take them and email them back to me? Do you want to email them back to me? Okay.
Just to that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, does anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Today, I'm coming in front of you as the floodmaid, floodplain administrator for Wells County. We've been asked by DNR to update or really replace our flood ordinance for the county. So, what we had in the past, the document, that's included in our zoning ordinance online as the Wells County ordinance for flood hazard areas. The state has redone their model ordinance, which is now to be titled as the Wells County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. I provided a copy of the ordinance to you for your review, as well as notes or kind of report of what the changes were between the documents.
Fifty-eight pages and like, okay, what is different between that document and the one back and whatever, fourteen or fifteen, so.
So, just kind of a brief statement about some of the bigger changes to it. One, they're refining the process down, further defining it as far as the duty of a floodplain administrator, and how the enforcement of the ordinance, ordinance goes through the permitting process, as well as the definitions that kind of guard, guide that process. We have opted not to change any of the regulatory parts that Wells County has a say in, in the section of the ordinance. We have to follow the basic draft guidelines of the model ordinance, because that is what is approved by FEMA and DNR and handed to us. There's options in regards to the actual restrictions, and those we have opted to keep the same as in the past. One of the biggest beneficiaries between the last or the current ordinance and what would be presented today for your approval is the option of using better information in making the decision-making on what is in or not in a floodplain. So, over the past several years, DNR has been working with FEMA to upgrade and update the floodplains that are showing on our, like you would see on our beacon website. What we're getting to now use is what they are, DNR is considering their best available layer, which is based off of LiDAR information that was taken just a few years ago, which is way better contour and elevation data, more accurate, which allows us to really pinpoint in what structures and what properties actually have flood risk, and where development and improvement's going to occur on those, and then what jurisdiction they call into. So, that, having access and having the ordinance actually called out that we can use it greatly helps, one, with figuring out whether they acquired state approval or just local approval, and then just the quality of the information and speed that we can get flood elevation information for property owners. So, those are the key takeaways. I didn't submit a one-page document, but I did talk about that. Otherwise, I would ask if there was any questions from the commissioners before I ask for approval.
When will this get presented to your board, or has it been there?
So, it is not a plane commission thing, so that's, yeah, one, one kind of difference between our zoning subdivision control ordinances, which run through the plane commission for review and then sent back. This is specifically through the floodplain administrator position.
So, effectively, date regulatory-wise, what is it set at, and are you matching that, or are we just telling it becomes effective?
So, yeah, so one, we are setting the, the effective date upon the, the approval last jurisdiction to sign. So, it's the county, it's the town of Ossean, city of Bluffton, Panito, Uniondale, Zanesville.
Gotcha.
All the participants are the same as in the plane commission, but they're adopting them not through that.
So, it goes into effect when Barrefield or Zane.
Yeah, whoever the last one is, yes. Yep, yep.
We're the first?
No.
We're not.
Yeah, Ossean and, and one other have approved it at this time, so.
What, what changes have been made there, Mike? I'm sorry, maybe I missed that. Are there changes that, that now affect the, the old agreement we had that we're going to be adopting now?
No. All right, as far, as far as the regu, the regulations for which we enforce, those are the same. This is the quality of the information that we can use in that decision-making is what is changing.
Okay.
And some of the procedural points through. Like, another one that was pointed out is it calls out when we should go to FEMA with a letter of map amendment versus in the ordinance draft before, that section wasn't there, so now it specifically states if you do these things, you need to go there. It clarifies when that's supposed to happen, instead of leaving that out for interpretation, which is a system helpful. Otherwise, the exact requirements are mere, and it's from one document to the other, with more robust information about how to do it.
Okay, okay, I'll second that. One favor, Ray.
Aye.
Two zero.
And we need an ordinance number.
Twenty twenty-two dash one-two.
And do you have a copy that you want them to sign?
I do.
Okay. All right, I'll collect that at the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here to answer any questions, I believe Colin and the attorney for the town of Ossean have worked through an agreement between the town of Ossean and the county for reimbursement for partnering for the spec building that's going to be constructed in Ossean in the industrial park. Thirty thousand square foot spec building, estimated cost of about two point eight million, and the county is going to assist in the payment of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of interest assistance, and that would be over a, it's about a two-year period roughly of payments twice a year, and the county being sixty percent of that payment and forty percent for the town of Ossean. The payments would be a reimbursement to Ossean, so the agreement for the, the building with the, the company that isn't constructing it, Logan Properties, is direct with this, with the town of Ossean, and you would then just, they would make those, upr, those payments upfront, and then the county would then reimburse for those payments as, once proof has been made that those payments have been made, direct to the, to the bank. So, I'm recommending approval with a minor change of the current agreement. The current agreement has Premier Bank. That changed before the agreement got recorded to Community State Bank, and so with that only change, I would recommend, or your approval to partner with the town of Ossean for the spec building.
This only needs the commissioner and president's signature, so I can make that change and give that one care for today.
I'll make that motion to allow the president to sign the document.
Second, one favor, Ray.
Aye.
Two zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The building's come along, we're a commerce partner in that, and it's going to be constructing it, and building's ordered, and, oh yeah, just waiting.
Good.
And when do we expect, September?
About, yeah. Hopefully soon.
We still have to get them to sign, so.
Okay. Lots of reports.
The only miscellaneous business is listed.
Okay. So, the sound system, so Commissioner Stringer could not be here today for personal reasons, and we've received two different quotes, but I think I would like to table that until he's able to be here at the next meeting with the sound system. I think we need to do the same for the Pita Boa appointment application, and also for the review, or employee review, instruments and procedures. That leaves the, a question for you, Sheriff. When we were talking about nine-one-one, were we allowed to call it a consolidation, or is it something different than we were discussing?
It's more of a combined dispatch, not consolidation.
Combined, is the word.
Consolidation is related to the PSAPs. If you're combining two PSAP within a county together, then that would be a, yeah, would be a consolidation, or true consolidation.
So, back when we, the commissioner created the nine-one-one board, the, the purpose, of course, was to get all first responders together, interested parties and executives in the county, to come together and be able to get a greater understanding of nine-one-one, how it operates, and also give a sense of equality and voice to the operations and sort of procedures therein, excluding, you know, the national standards or procedures already in place for dispatching a call, of course. So, what we have been doing, the county's been engaging with the city to talk about how can we make nine-one-one better and more efficient for the citizens of Wells County? And so, discussions have been going on, and that, you know, I'm, I'm pleased with some of the headway that we've made in cooperation with the city. And again, this is more of just an update than is anything. We're still talking about what a combined dispatch would look like, and I know they've been helping us out with call volume from the county and due to shortages in labor and everything else, which everybody's facing right now, so more than anything, I just want to make sure that we at least gave the public an update on that we are talking about this, and it is something that is a, a topic of discussion between the city and the county right now. But we're still trying to kind of wade through the best way to make that the best for the people of Wells County, so. That's in a nutshell, unless you need anything else. Okay. Do we have anything else?
Nothing for me.
All right. With that, we've also had you in here, audience, sir.
What's the question on the, on the speaker or the sound system?
Right now, we, I think we need a quote on one replacement and then also just repairing, so that's what we're looking at. What we got is a quote, one for replacement and one for repair, but we need the same, like, we need somebody to compare both of those two.
Is your microphone on right now?
It is on right now.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're kind of, and I guess there's feedback issues and some other things, so several people sitting back in that corner specifically cannot hear.
With the air vent right about there.
Right.
Right, and I'll also mention, I, I tried to watch the previous city council meeting on The Voice.
County council.
Excuse me, county council meeting, and when Connor started talking, it got, there was so much feedback, it was unwatchable.
Yeah, it was bad, and they shut it off, because there was so much, it was coming through the speakers and hearing it.
It was too, okay.
So, so some of that's designed, and either way, if we're going to lean towards a replacement, we still need, I feel, a second quote to.
Yeah, right. Apples to apples, I mean, sure. I just wanted to make sure we were, I'm not a neck. Speaking the same language.
Oh, yeah. No, we are. I would, I would fix it myself if you know how, but I don't, so.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
It is complicated.
It's over my pay grade, so.
Congratulations to our graduation students, seniors.
Absolutely.
Appreciate them, and we'd love to have everyone back in the county. I'm sure Chad would appreciate.
We need, we need the labor force. There are jobs. Anything else? With that, except motion to adjourn?
Make that motion to adjourn.
Second, one favor, Ray.
Aye.
Two zero.
Thank you.